We all good, Brad? All right. We're all set. We're going to turn it over to Finance Director Jessica.
Okay, we have our annual, the presentation of our annual financial statements. And we have Judy Dokendorf and Danny Risky here to present the financial statements.
All right. Good afternoon. So you should have the pretty, I don't have a pretty version, but the pretty version of the annual comprehensive financial report. So that's our financial statements. And then you should also have a smaller bound version that says Deloitte on the top. So we're going to walk through these in conjunction here. Please ask questions as we go. We'll page turn some of your big book and give you some highlights, but absolutely, please ask questions as we go. Danny and I will switch off a little bit and then Finance Director and the City Manager will also add some color as necessary for questions that you might have. And I will also share our slides here as well. So just as we start, before we get into the book of the financial statements. So the scope of the audit for 2021 includes us opining on the governmental activities, the business type activities, the discreetly presented component unit, which is the Port Authority, the aggregate remaining funds in the internal service, which includes the internal service funds, and then each of the major funds that have been identified by the city. So we do audit procedures over each of those. And the opinion that we issue covers all of those opinion units. For 2021, we have issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. So that's the highest level of opinion that we can provide over the financial statements. And you will see that in your big book on page 13 and 14 and 15. It's three pages now. It used to be two pages, three-page opinion in the financial statements, but outlines the opinion units covered and then tells you that it's an unmodified or a clean opinion on the 2021 financial statements. We also look to assess whether or not the city met the requirements for a single audit or a compliance audit over federal dollars. And in the current year, the city did not expend more than $750,000 in money from federal sources. So a single audit was not required. You will see detail of the expenditures that were made during the year, and that's on pages 138 and 139 of your big book. So it details out there expenditures under different federal grants that were expended, but a specific audit on those dollars was not required because the threshold was not met by the city in 2021.
So Judy, can I interrupt you just for a second?
Absolutely.
Mayor and Council, I can turn the light back on if, because you're going to be going through your book. If, if we're not going to watch, the screen is always seems better when the light's off. But again, you're going to be referring back to, you know, Judy and she's going to go between the books. So if you prefer, we turn the lights back on and we'll want to make sure everybody can see. Yep. Thanks, Brad. Sorry, Judy.
No, that's fine.
Could I also add that on page 30, you'll see the recovery grant? And those are not, those are not recorded as federal awards this year because we have not expended those dollars. So they're recorded as a liability until we spend that, that award on on projects that are covered by the ARPA.
And you have a couple of years to do that.
Right. I believe we have until 20, the end of 2024 to decide what we want to spend those dollars on. And then we have until the end of 2026 to actually spend those dollars. Page 30, you'll see that the fund is called the Recovery Grant.
So the city would have received more than $750,000, but they didn't expend it or use those dollars. So an audit on how those dollars were used isn't necessary because that threshold wasn't met. And maybe just stepping back to understand kind of the audit work that we do. So we go through first and understand the major funds that have been determined by the city. There's a calculation that's done, but then the city actually identifies a few additional enterprise funds as major funds. And what that means is when we go through, we'll set a materiality level that we perform testing on. So we don't look at any like down to the penny, right? Or we wouldn't be able to be here today talking to you. We'd still be auditing. But we'll set a materiality level and then we'll perform procedures. Those procedures involve inquiries with management to understand what's gone on during the year. We perform analytical procedures where we will develop an expectation of what we think a balance might be and then compare it to what's recorded. We'll perform detailed testing of transactions that have occurred. We will make selections of expenditures that have gone out the door to see, yes, this agrees to an invoice that invoice was related to expenses incurred in 2021. Those expenses are appropriately reflected in the fund that they relate to. Depending on the type of the financial statement line we're looking at, our procedures do vary. Certain procedures, we actually send external confirmation. So things from Winona County, they actually confirmed to us amounts that the city should have recorded. So a lot of different procedures go on related to amounts that are recorded in the financial statements for transactions in 2021. My clicker may have stopped working. The next slide I just wanted to talk about before we kind of dive into the large financial statement book, if you can go one more. Thanks. So we also perform specific procedures around management override of controls. So management override of controls is a presumed fraud risk and significant risk for every audit engagement. It's presumed and prescribed by the auditing standards. So not something that rises to the level of a significant risk or fraud risk because of anything we've identified at the city itself, but required as part of our audit procedures. And to assess that, we look at estimates that management makes. So we look at estimates around the other post-employment benefit liability, assumptions used in IBNR calculations, pension liabilities that are on the books. We will perform analytical procedures to say, you know, does this look right if we compare to the prior year? And I would tell you, for some of our testing this year, we actually looked back to 2019 because of the oddities of 2020 with a, from a COVID perspective. Certain things like recreation fund type things that said, hmm, these are up a lot from 2020. Makes sense. Are they actually in line with 2019? And does that make sense? Or should we delve in and make some more selections? So do that as part of our look at management override. We also get a population of all journal entries made during the year. We're able to take that population, reconcile it to the activity of the financial statements, and then select certain entries that might be of interest. Does this entry debiting or crediting something that, you know, may raise a flag for us? Did the city manager say, please book this type of thing? And as we went through all of our testing procedures over management override, no indications of management override or bias in any estimates were noted. That's high level, a little bit around kind of what we've done. We'll focus on some of the other areas as we flip, you know, the bigger pages. But audit really is looking back on what happened during 2021 and were those amounts appropriately recorded in the financial statements of the city? Okay. So now I'm going to turn it over to Danny and we're going to walk between our slides and your big book to talk about just some of the overall financial results for the year.
Thanks, Judy. So these next few slides will be covering some nice charts and graphs to kind of show the operations of the city and the financial results from 2021. A lot of them will have comparisons. So you can see the slide that we're currently on has 2021 as well as 2020 to really show you the results of 2021, but also how those compare and how those might have changed from 2020. So this first slide here lines up pretty nicely with page number 37 in your big book. If you want to flip to that.
Sorry, it's 27.
27. Sorry about that. And what this is showing is it's a statement of net position for the government-wide financial statements. So it shows the assets of the city, the liabilities, and then the remaining difference between those two is the net position. So the net position is essentially, how many assets do you have less your liabilities? And that's what your net position is. So on the left column, you'll see a governmental activities column. And on the very bottom is where the net position is located. And that amount, as you can see at the very bottom, is 66.3 million as of 2021. Compared to 2020, that was about 64.4 million. So a slight increase year over year. And there's also lines in here that show what that net position is, the restricted amount, the unrestricted amount, and then the net investment in capital assets. So when comparing 2021 to 2020, you will see that in 2021, there's a significant portion that is now unrestricted that was included in restricted of last year. And that's just due to further analysis to determine that some of the amounts that were actually considered restricted last year might have been too conservative and that actually represent something that is unrestricted. So it's an analysis that we worked through with Jessica and her team to prove out that around 20% of the net position is actually an unrestricted amount and does not have a commitment or a restriction on the way that those funds can be used.
Steve, could you give us an example of some of those? An analysis where you showed that, that they were formally restricted and became unrestricted? Just an idea of some of those, what, what, it's a big swing and I'm just trying to gain some further understanding.
So restrictions need to have an outside, they need to be restricted by an outside source. And one of the examples would be an internal service fund. There's a benefit, employee benefit fund. And those are restricted by being in that fund. So they don't, they're not considered restricted at the government-wide level.
Okay.
Are you, maybe, are you asking maybe some that were shown as restricted last year in our?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to ask. If I ask it backwards, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I think it was probably for some funds, and I apologize because I don't have last year's detail with me, but certain project funds or maybe different funds you, the council may be assigned, but were not externally restricted.
You said we realized we were too, too aggressive in labeling these as restricted. And so we've now backed off that. So I was interested in
Yep.
that.
And we can get back to you because we have the breakout on the bottom of last year's. I just don't have last year's. This, the bad part about these financial statements is they're single years. So it's hard to go back.
Okay. So basically, an outside entity had, we believed it was restricted in 2020. Moving into 2021, we realized those were not.
Not necessarily. We were just more, the city was more conservative in saying there was a formal restriction on it, but what can be shown and restricted it just has to have external restrictions. And some of the items there were maybe restricted by the city for something, but not an external party.
Right. So if you look at page 30, you can see that there, in the general fund, there are, there is an assigned balance of 7.6 million and a committed balance of 3 million. And those are examples of items that were restricted in 2021, but unrestricted in, I'm sorry, unrestricted in 2021.
Restricted.
And they were restricted in 2020.
Okay. Okay. That's helping.
We were too conservative last year. Basically, they weren't, they didn't have external restrictions on them, even though the city has assigned or committed them to some, something in particular.
Okay. It's helping. Coming in more into focus.
Last year's, you can see the breakout, too.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Brad, can we go next slide? Next slide shows the business type activities. So staying on page 27, the column to the right that we were just on. This is for the statement of net position for business activities. Comparing year over year, there was a slight decrease in the net position balance for the business type activities of around $700,000. So just a slight around 1% decrease. Nothing to call out there. Again, we are seeing a reduction in the amount that are restricted. And this just relates to amounts that were committed last year that are no longer there. In relation to the current year, there's just less out there that actually have a commitment to them or are restricted by the external party. So you're seeing that the, the makeup of the net position year over year, there's less restricted as of the end of 2021 than there was last year. Questions on that? Okay. Next slide. So now we'll move to pages 28 and 29. Sophia's flip one page. This is showing a statement of activities, which essentially summarizes the revenues and expenditures for the city in 2021. When you compare 2021 to 2020, you will see, if you look at the slide, that line that says net expenses to be funded by property taxes and other sources is higher in 2021. That's mainly due to capital grants and other contributions that were received by the city in 2020. A lot of it relating to federal funding, COVID funding, things that were received in 2020 that compared to 2021, just that level of funding was not received. So therefore, that's going to increase the amount of expenditures that need to be offset by other revenues within the city and that the city generates throughout the year. And as you move down the columns, you'll see property taxes, franchise fees, transfers, investment earnings. That's what's going to offset your expenditures to get to your total revenues. Judy, anything I missed there?
The only thing I would highlight for the council is, you get to the bottom of the page on two pages, right? And we have prior period adjustments for both governmental activities and the Port Authority. So 588,000 within governmental activities and then about 700,000 in the Port Authority column. Those relate to corrections of errors that were identified related to the prior year. So each of those, there are notes receivable, both at the governmental activities, activity, and then the component unit activity, where those notes receivable were offset in the financial statements by unearned revenue. And they should have actually been offset into net position. So that is correcting this. They're not deemed to be material to the financial statements. They actually increase net position rather than decreasing it. And it was just that those notes receivable really should have been offset against net position balances rather than unearned revenue as they had historically been. We'll see that a few more times as we go through, but that's kind of the last thing. Anything else on statement of activities at this point?
No.
Okay.
We'll stay here because I think there's a couple of first.
Yep. If we can go next slide. So this is just another way of presenting information we've been talking about on the statement of activities. So this is for government-wide, so inclusive of both governmental and business-type activities. Just showing the composition of revenue and what that was made up of for both 2021 and 2020. The biggest change that you're going to see comparing the two is that, well, on your paper, it looks more black. Up there, it looks blue. But that, that black line as well as the light blue line below it, this goes back to what we were discussing before of just the amount of capital grants and operating grants and contributions that were received in 2020, made up around 24% of revenue. That decreased to a total of 10% in 2021. So overall, I think the makeup of the revenue is generally consistent with the exception of those two categories.
Was a lot of that COVID money?
The, the majority of it, I think, was related to the grants that we received for the Riverview Drive project and the snow removal project, which were mostly complete in 2020.
Thank you.
Go to the next slide. And then from the expense side, staying on the government-wide financial statements and the statement activities, this is showing the year-over-year comparison of what that expense was made up of for both 2021 and 2020. Fairly consistent across both years. Nothing too noteworthy. I think there, a few of the categories only changed by a percent or two, but nothing major driving the change in the makeup of expenses across 2021 and 2020.
In total, expenses were down about a million dollars. And you can see in the kind of footnote at the bottom, 22, 22.5 million last year, 21.5 million in 2021 for governmental activities.
So that was the government-wide financial statements. Now we're going to get into the fund financial statements. The slide that's currently up has some information around kind of what the difference is between government-wide and fund financials. But then, within the fund financial statements, you have two categories. One is the governmental funds and the second one is prepar, prepar, sorry, proprietary. That's a tough word. Proprietary funds. The governmental funds typically just focus on the sources, uses, and balances of current financial resources. In comparison to that, the proprietary funds, which are more akin to a business-type fund or run similarly to a business, focus on operating income, changes in that position, and cash flows.
And so your governmental financial statements, your balance sheet is on page 30. If you change, flip to page 30.
So here you can see the components of the governmental fund financial statements. So you've got your general fund, the Riverview Drive Reconstruction Fund, the Recovery Grant, and then the other non-major governmental funds. And that is a number of funds, your capital projects, your debt funds, your permanent funds. And there's detail of that in the back of the financial statements. But these are your financial statements on the, for the governmental funds. And then if you turn to page 32, that is your statement of revenue and expenses for those same governmental funds. And this, these financial statements really focused on current uses and resources of dollars in the governmental financial fund, financial statements. Anything more you want to add on those ones? Okay.
Okay. Now we're on page 36 of your big book. Here we get into the proprietary fund financial statements. So page 36 and 37 is going to be your statement of net position for the proprietary funds. Similar to, similar makeup of what we've seen already, where you have your assets, your liabilities, and then your net position. Look to the next page on 38 and 39 and we can move to the next slide.
Can I just point something out on, on pages 36 and 37? So if you see about halfway down in the liabilities and net position section, there is cash written against future deposits. In the recreation fund, there is a negative cash balance of $239,618. And that's, that's what that line is. It's because the recreation fund does not have, have enough cash to cover their expenses.
I have a question. Wasn't the rec fund, that was a newer one though, right? That we, or am I thinking of something else?
Mayor and Council, the Recreation Fund here is the 617 Fund. That's the Recreation Department. We have the Internal Service Fund called the Park Fund.
Okay.
That is newer.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and this one, I think we had in the, in the ARPA slide that we talked about with Baker Tilly to reimburse this fund because in 2020, we weren't able to collect revenue while those facilities were closed.
Back to page 38 and 39. This will show your statement of revenues and expenses for these proprietary funds. And on the slide, we selected four of them. So there's eight proprietary funds that are presented. We selected four of them to summarize the information that you're seeing and the financial results of those funds. So as you can see, within these, your water fund and your sanitary sewer fund, those are funds that traditionally have generated enough revenues to cover the expenses within the fund. So you can see for the water fund, you have a 3% operating margin, which means that your revenues were 3% higher than the costs associated with running that fund in the current year. Recreation Fund and Library Fund are a little bit different than that. Generally, they don't generate the revenues to cover the expenses. They're more of the, the public service type activities. So really what we wanted to show on this slide was just the differences that you can see within the proprietary funds as far as the generation of revenue and how to cover the expenses.
And I just point out, in the water fund, you'll notice a decrease in the operating income. And that's because during COVID, meters were not being replaced. So that expense was not there. And so in 2021, we started to replace meters again. And that increased the expenditures as well as a couple of well repairs. Also, in the sewer fund, we had the, our, our loss in operating income decreased. And that was because in 2020, we had a Winona Mall project to replace sanitary sewer. And then there were more sewer service repairs in 2020 versus 2021. The recreation and library funds, those two funds, because they're enterprise funds, tax, tax levy is not considered operating income. It's considered non-operating income. So when you look at the operating income or loss, that, that tax levy revenue is not taken into account.
I think I'll pass it back to Judy.
Mayor, just a question. Jessica, now all the wages for the Water Department employees and Sewer Department employees, that, all that is paid out of these funds, right?
That's right.
No direct tax levy for, for those salaries?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So can you take these slides down just so we don't get confused? We're just going to flip the big book here for a little bit and highlight some information. I'm actually first going to take you back to page 30, which was our governmental fund balance sheet. And as we mentioned, governmental funds really focus on current resources, current liabilities, right? So you don't see here long-term liabilities, long-term assets. We don't carry forward the capital assets at the government-wide level to these funds. And so then I would turn you one page to page 32, to our, our income statement or our statement of revenue for those same governmental funds. And highlight at the bottom, we have a prior period adjustment in the governmental funds as well. And that relates to the fact that historically, the city had been recording the OPEB liability or the other post-employment liability related to employees or kind of the general obligations of the city within the general fund, as well as a small amount in other non-major governmental funds. Those amounts should not have been reflected in the governmental financial statements. They were always on the government-wide, the financial statements we looked at first. They should not have been here because they represent long-term liabilities. And so they were reclassified here to the internal service funds. And those show up on pages 38 and 39. So the Internal Service Fund is the very far right column. And you can see there's an adjustment And you can see there's an adjustment to net position here because we brought the liability over now where it should have always been. Um, and so we do have a restatement there as well.
But this had a zero-dollar effect on the government as a whole.
Yeah, it was correct in the, the governmental business type and government-wide, it was correct there. It just should have been in a different fund financial statement. Okay, so then starting on page forty-five are the notes to the financial statements. So there's probably forty pages of notes to the financial statements here. Um, so I'm just going to kind of flip pages. As you have questions, let us know and we can talk about anything. Note one is voluminous. There are, I think, all the way to one R um in the note one, but that just gives you background on accounting policies followed by the city, various information um around any component units. So page forty-six talks about the fact that the Port Authority is a discreetly presented component unit. Walks through, gives you some information on pages forty-seven and forty-eight on what the different funds are. And as you keep walking through, it essentially starts to tell you, okay, for cash, cash equivalents and investments, these are our policies that are in place at the city. Here's how we think about things. Here's what restricted assets mean. Here's what capital asset means. So it's a voluminous note, but it really is giving you background on the accounting policies that the city has in place. And I would tell you there are no significant changes in any accounting policies utilized by the city in 2021. Page fifty-four um within letter Q are new accounting pronouncements. So there's a number of these. The Gatsby has been busy over the last few years, um issuing new accounting standards. The biggest one that will be applicable for the city will be the leasing standard. And so this is a lot of work that's undergone to just first identify what leases the city may have. And then come 2022, those leases will actually need to be shown as liabilities and assets on the financial statement. So right now you just see the expense come through for anything you might be leasing. Those assets and liabilities will come on to the balance sheet here in 2022. And it's been a lot of work to inventory. All of them are out there. Um, the valuation of them is easier. It's really just getting your hands on what might be out there. Who might be making a monthly payment that doesn't think this is a lease, but really we're leasing something and we need to get that on the financial statements. And then footnote one R on page fifty-five um talks about the restatement. So summarizes the items I talked about related to the reclassification of the OPEB liability and then the two notes receivable that should not have off, been offset by unearned revenue, but should rather have been offset to net position. But note two is five to six pages of cash um and cash equivalents and investments disclosures. I would say there's nothing new or significant here that I would highlight unless there's anything you want to highlight or there's any questions.
Go ahead, George.
The one, uh, going back on uh bullet point number one.
Yes.
Talking about public-private and public-public partnerships and availability payment arrangements. Can you just touch on that just a little bit, what all that means there? It's on page fifty-four.
Yep. And have you guys looked into that? I haven't looked into that statement much. I'm not sure. I think right now we're still evaluating if it's applicable.
Yeah, we're still evaluating if it's applicable.
I And really I think it would come down to, do you have some of these arrangements that should ultimately be recorded in your financial statements versus just maybe seeing payments coming in out the door or recording receivables? Are there entities that maybe should actually end up being consolidated into the results of the city?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, then footnote three is your capital asset activity. It starts on page sixty. And you have essentially a roll forward of governmental activities as well as business-type activities, your beginning balances, any additions during the year, decreases um for disposing of anything as well as what your accumulated depreciation balances are. And then on page sixty-one, you can see the breakout of depreciation expense on those assets, both between governmental activities and business type. And then a very similar table for the Court Authority from a component unit perspective. And that million dollars you see in construction in progress for the component unit is, was the ongoing work at the dock? Is that finished now that we're halfway through 2022?
Yes, it is.
All right. So as of the end of the year, it was in process um in service now. And then on the top of page sixty-two, uh, you can just see a little detail of the construction in progress amounts. There were none for business-type activities, uh, but a few in the governmental funds. Footnote four, the properties held for development, um relates to the land that the port holds. And the second paragraph there talks about just the activity for 2021. So five point four-eight acres sold and point six-one acres purchased, leaving twenty-six point seven-two developable acres as of the end of 2021. But note five gives you detail on long-term debt. Um, there's a number of tables in here, but I would tell you that there was no new debt um undertaken in 2021. There were payments made on the outstanding debt um during the year.
On page sixty-four, you can see that the GEO equipment certificates will be complete or will have those paid in 2023.
And at the end of twenty-one, the, the Port Authority had no outstanding debt. The top of page sixty-six just gives you a little bit of a roll forward of the activity for long-term liabilities. So you've got the bonds and certificates payable we saw earlier in this footnote, the OPEB liability and then compensated absences, which include unused vacation, um sick leave and compensated time off. Footnote six is a doozy, the pension plans. There's a lot of disclosures required under Gatsby standards um for the pension plans. So the city's employees participate both in the general pension plan and then the police and fire um pension plans from the Public Employees Retirement Association. I would turn you to pages sixty-eight and sixty-nine. And under section four, so pension costs, we have the GIRF, so the general employees one. And you can see in the first sentence there, at the end of 2021, there was a liability of about four point five million. And if you look essentially that same level on the next page, on page sixty-nine, in the police and fire pension costs, you can see that there's a reported liability of about three point six million at the end of the year. The liabilities were helped by favorable asset returns and changes in discount rates in 2021 to bring some of those balances down. But with these pension plans, so the city participates in the state of Minnesota's plans. So the city themselves are not setting any of the assumptions that are used in valuing the liability. They're just recording their share of the liability based on contributions that are made during the year and the specifics for the city employees that participate. Um.
Mayor, just one question here.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, in regards to pension status, are we where we should be with our payments on the pension plans?
We make the payments to the pension plans that are required according to legislation.
Okay.
Um, there are two tables, um, they're the last two pages of the book. Um, and they show the unfunded balance um in those pension funds. So you can see that um their pages one ninety and one ninety-one. And you can see that um um the GIRF, the general employee one is funded eighty-five percent. And the police and fire is funded ninety-two percent.
Okay.
And Mayor and Council, Judy may get to this, but on page eighteen of your small packet, that's illustrated in a chart there as well. So sure you're going to get to it, but as long as Councilman Borzjakowski asked, Jessica referred to it in the big document. Uh, you get a snapshot on, on page eighteen.
Which is also in the many pages of the pension footnote disclosure. Take that up with Gatsby though. They require the disclosures, not the auditors. Okay. Uh, so then footnote seven, which starts on the bottom of page seventy-three. Just has some information for you about inter-fund activity, receivables or payables that exist at the end of twenty-one that are in place and what those relate to, which fund owes the other. And then information about um transfers between funds that occurred during the year. So those are pages seventy-four and seventy-five, and then page seventy-six, the numbers align back to the previous page with just some explanation for you as to why transfers were made. Um, and we make a sample of these and agree them back to approval of the transfers between funds as part of our audit procedures. Footnote eight has detail on fund equity. So the bottom of page seventy-six gives you some detail around just the different categories. And then the next couple of pages tell you restrictions, assignments, commitments by fund of different amounts that sit there. But note nine gives a little bit of detail on fund equity deficits and some individual fund disclosures. That's page seventy-nine. But note ten, which is on page eighty, just talks about any fund changes. So Jessica had mentioned the Recovery Grant where those, those amounts were received um in 2021. So that was a grant or a fund that we saw on the governmental fund financial statements and was new. Um, and we traced the receipt of those dollars um to support for 2021. Otherwise, there were no other new funds opened and no funds closed during 2021. But note eleven just tells you that there's eight enterprise funds. So those were the proprietary funds, the water, the sewer, the recreation that we saw earlier on the pages and Danny walked through. But note twelve is the contingency footnote, but nothing to disclose here in the financial statements. And then footnote thirteen has information on health benefit program as well as the other post-employment benefit liability, which that's calculated by a third-party actuary that the city uses. Um, and there, because that's the city's plan, they're able to set assumptions, discount rates, et cetera, that are used, unlike the pension plan, which the state sets. Um, and that is done every other year. You can use a roll-forward year under Gatsby standards. Um, and we engage specialists from Deloitte's side to look at the assumptions that are used each year they're reset. And we had no concerns with those assumptions used. And then footnote fourteen on page eighty-four has information on conduit debt obligations. So those are the notes. If you're bored and want to read through in more detail, uh, take that book home with you. But we will now, if you could put the slides back up, Chad. Or Brad, sorry. I apologize. Chad, he's the do-it-all guy, so he probably couldn't for us too. Um, so now we're going to walk through just a few more, um. Those are the notes to the financial statements. You can tell though, right? We're only on page eighty-five, so we're not done with your big book. There's a number of um consolidating schedules that you'll see as well as some statistical information. So maybe before I have Danny jump into this really quick, um, page ninety-one through ninety-three give you detail of what's considered non-major funds. So these all accumulate into one number that was on our governmental fund financial statement and a balance that we subject to audit. We look at it in total. But you'll have a number of pages then that tell you by fund, here's your balance sheet. And then that's followed by your income statement. So if you were curious about the permanent improvement revolving bond fund, you could look at page ninety-six and see that that has a fund balance of one point three million dollars at the end of the year. So these are smaller funds, not determined to be major, but they are subject to our audit work as kind of one combined set of balances that we look at. That takes you all the way through page one oh nine. One eleven then does something similar where you get background on what are internal service funds. The, what those different funds are, and then you're going to again see a balance sheet, a statement of revenues, and you actually see a statement of cash flows on the internal service funds as well. But again, if I wanted to come see what's my pension coordinated, which is essentially our general pension fund, I could come in and look and I could say, okay, yep, page one thirteen have two columns for pension plans. And I can see that I've got, you know, a liability of six point six million dollars in those funds.
And on pages one fourteen and one fifteen, um you can see the the transfers that happen at the end of the year. So um periodically I've council members ask about if money was transferred into the equipment fund. Here you can see that there was a transfer in during the year of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine dollars to the equipment fund. Um, or Eileen mentioned earlier, the park revolving fund, you can see on the bottom line under park revolving that there's a balance of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two.
Okay, so then we get into um some statistical information, which I'll have Danny walk through really quickly, just a few of the slides um that we highlighted. And I think Jessica might want to highlight just a couple of slides as well. Um, or a couple of pages in the statistical schedules that are in the back.
So the first one we're going to highlight pertains to information that's on page one hundred and sixty-five of your big book. And this shows the estimated actual value of property and tax capacity for the city over the years twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two. So if you look between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the total estimated tax capacity increased about one point one, one, one point one seven. And the total estimated property market value increased about four point six percent between those two years. Those ratios off to the right show the ratio of your tax capacity to the market value as well as the annual percent change in that total market value. And then it also shows twenty twenty-two to show what that projected increase will look like over the prior year and the current year. Next slide. This next slide is around the legal debt margin, and that's on page one hundred and seventy-eight of your big book. And this shows your debt margin in the current applicable debt outstanding as a percent of that legal limit. So I think on page one seventy-eight, there's a footnote on the bottom that says that your legal debt limit is by MN statute is three percent of the market value of taxable property. So if you look at the assessed value in twenty twenty-one of about one point nine billion dollars, you multiply that by your three percent per MN statute, you get your legal debt margin of fifty-two million dollars. And what that eight point three percent is showing is that's how much is used currently of that legal debt margin. I think Judy alluded to this earlier, but over time that debt balance has been coming down. I think Judy alluded to this earlier, but over time, that debt balance has been coming down. And you can see that as a percentages from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one have started to decrease as far as the total debt limit that's being currently used by outstanding debt.
Well, what is our debt per capita right now?
I think there's a table for that. Jessica, any idea to top your head?
Yeah, I have it marked here in the front. There's a couple of sections that you can look for this, um, but I, it's part of the letter in the front on page eight. The debt per capita, uh, for direct debt is a hundred and fifty-four. Was a hundred and fifty-four in twenty twenty and a hundred and fifteen in twenty twenty-one.
So right now it's a hundred and fifteen?
A hundred and fifteen.
Okay. When I first got on council, it was twenty-five dollars. So it really didn't raise too much.
Yeah. He did one seventy-four and one seventy-five.
Slide, Brad. So this next slide here shows some productivity measures across twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one. So it's first gonna show you the number of, um, or the population per FTE, so per city employee. So per city employee, there were about a hundred and forty-nine residents in twenty twenty-one compared to a hundred and fifty-one in twenty twenty. But it's also gonna show you the estimated market value per employee. So the estimated market value per city employee in twenty twenty-one is around eleven thousand or just north of that, which increased about a thousand dollars or a little bit less from twenty twenty.
The population, um, is the number from the census, um, and I believe the city is dismuting that calculation.
And then maybe just a couple of other that we don't have slides for. Um, page one sixty-eight is the principal property taxpayers. So detail of the top ten property taxpayers, both in twenty twenty-one and then essentially compared back ten years. And I would point out the fact that your principal taxpayers are really covering just under eleven percent of the total tax capacity. So you've got a good diverse tax base here. And it's come down a little from ten years ago. And then page one eighty-two does a similar look but at principal employers. Again, your top ten by number of employees in twenty twenty-one and then back a number of years. In here, you'll see the top ten employers employ about twenty-one and a half percent of the total employees. But again, good diversity here. You're not, you know, holding on tight with, you know, just a couple employers employing most of the city employees or employees in the city.
And that's based on county uh, population? Percentage of total county employment?
So you can see, um, in the data source where those numbers came from. So, um, the um, so under one, it's from the community development demographic report as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Okay, so that you see the numbers for that, I'm assuming? Yeah.
It's colored based on county.
Oh, okay. Cool.
Those were the tables I wanted to point out. Any other of the many statistical tables in here you wanted to highlight?
Um, page one eighty-three, the next page, has, um, information about construction that took place in twenty twenty, well, from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one. So you can see, um, in twenty twenty-one, there was the Waters Edge, um, apartment complex, the ZRH partnership construction of QuickDrip. And Hyatt metal forming LLCs construction of a new manufacturing facility. And the other two that I was gonna point out, we talked about.
That is perfect. Okay, so those two hundred pages are your annual comprehensive financial report for the city. Tells you everything you wanted to know and probably more. From the presentation you have in front of you, so Chad mentioned that this lined up with what was in footnote six. So a little bit of detail, if you want to see it maybe more on a consolidated basis for both the police and fire and the general pension plans that city, the city employees participate in, again administered by the Public Employee Retirement Association. And then the next slide just shows you the OPEB liability, which is unfunded. Um, but I think the city is working to determine if funding some of that liability or working on what might work to fund some of that liability, but currently no assets set aside to fund the OPEB.
Um, that, that one, it's, it's a pay-as-you-go, so we've been paying the expenses as incurred.
Um, this slide just highlights some of the accounting policies we saw in note one Q. Again, the biggest being the leasing standard that city management is working through, accumulating that inventory and then finding, figuring out what the value of those will be. Um, we include some GFOA best practices. Anything you want to hit on here, Jessica?
Yeah, the capital asset management, um, that item will be addressing during our CIP process. And then there's the fund balance guidelines for the general fund. And during the budget process, we are going to review the finance policy and that will be brought back to council with any changes.
Um, then we do have a heat map, so things to consider from a risk perspective and ensure that there's focus on, obviously, the very top right item is cybersecurity, which is top of mind for everyone. Brad? Um, and then appendix A includes our required communications. So our responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards to perform our audit and opine on the fund information, so the governmental activities, business type, the component unit, the major funds, and then the aggregate remaining fund information we've talked about. We do look at internal controls as we perform our procedures, but we do not opine on internal controls. So we'll look to ensure that there's segregation of duties, reviews of payments that go out, reviews of journal entries, reviews of financial statements. Um, but we don't go to the level of testing for operating effectiveness as that's not required and we weren't engaged to do that for the city. Um, those significant accounting policies, we're in the very voluminous note one that we walked through in the financial statements. And as I mentioned, there's no significant changes in any policies in the current year. And the big accounting estimates really are the other post-employment liability and the pension liability. As part of our audit procedures, we do request representations from management. Um, we received those from Chad and Jessica today. They're available upon request if you'd like to see them, but there's no significant changes in what we requested from prior years. It's a, it's representing to us that management's provided us with everything we've asked for, that what's in the financial statements is complete and accurate. Um, this summarizes for you the three misstatements that were corrected in the current year. So the first one being the OPEB liability that should not have been in the governmental fund financial statements because those were based on current resources and liabilities. So that was moved over into the internal service funds. And then number two and number three relate to the notes receivable that shouldn't have been offset against unearned revenue. Do you want me to finish quick?
Nope.
We're good? Okay. Um, and then related to those, um, corrections of prior period misstatements, we have it, though they've not been determined to be material to the financial statement. So they did not impact any changes in net position balances for the year or activities, right? Because that's revenue less expenses. They were just reclassifications of things that should have been reported in that position that were reported in a liability or just were reported in incorrect funds. They're not material to the financial statements. They're not material to last year or to this year. Um, but they are the result of a control deficiency that rises to the level of something we would communicate with the city council. And that's really around just ensuring we've got a solid understanding of any of the unique accounting treatments under governmental accounting standards. Um, and based on all the work we've done with Jessica and her team this year, feel that at the end of this year, we're in a good spot, but the restatement of those financial statements does result in what would be classified as a significant deficiency. And then I would highlight for you just additional required communications. There was no restriction on the scope of our work this year or access to anyone. We actually spent two to three weeks in Winona this year. We got to spend some time onsite doing our audit work in person, which was great and certainly great to be here, um, with you all in person for today's communications. We received cooperation and had great communication throughout the year. We've talked with Jessica and Christine throughout the years. Items might come up as well in advance of the audit. So certainly appreciate all the hard work from that team and answering all of our questions um, and getting this financial statement out to you, um, for today. That's the end of our prepared materials, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, George?
Oh, will you be up here Thursday too for the Port Authority?
We're coming back in July instead.
Oh, in July, okay.
Will you be here?
Hopefully.
You'll be here, George.
Any other questions? No? Thank you both for your work. Appreciate it.
Yes.
To you and your team.
Thank you all. We appreciate the questions and discussion today as well.
Okay, with that, we'll be back on at six thirty here.